Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm having trouble logging in via the computer, so I'm on my phone.
Okay, Joe.
Thanks.
Okay, you are recording?
I'm having trouble getting onto the network.
You are recording and you are live.
Hey, we'll call a special meeting. The town is WPCA to order at 7:01 PM, January 26, 2021. In attendance on this meeting for the WPCA are Joe Finer, Veronica Laduke, Mark Glasgow, John Piscopo, and myself, Tom Mueller. Also in attendance for the WPCF is Bert Galpin Plant Manager and Jim Carradue, and I'm not sure how to pronounce that, Assistant Plant Manager. The first item on the agenda would be the minutes of the December 15th meeting. Does anybody have any comments, corrections? Questions?
Nothing from me.
I'm all good.
Second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Joe Finer, how do you, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rich? Oh, Rich Fane is out here. Veronica, how do you vote?
He did just log in. I don't know if he-
Rich just logged in?
I did see him just log in. Um, yeah, he's muted, but he did log in.
Uh, okay. Veronica, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I don't know. Rich, are you logged in now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we just had a motion seconded and voted to accept the minutes as presented. Do you have any?
No, I, I was fine. I was on, but I just couldn't, I had myself muted. I didn't turn on the sound, that's all.
Okay, so you're okay with the vote?
Well, yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next thing, I would entertain a motion to move Unimetall from old business to in front of consultant report.
Second it.
Any discussion? Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
And John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Right now, I think I'd like to turn it over to tie and bond. Fred, I saw you were on there. Is Lori on as well?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Why don't you folks kick it off and give us a brief synopsis of your technical memo for aquatic toxicity and the inhibition testing.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I'm, I'm going to give a brief introduction and then I'm going to turn it over to Fred for all of the technical issues because he's way more familiar with that than I am. But it's hard to believe that it's been a year since we submitted our initial local limits evaluation, but here we are. And at that time, we evaluated the treatment plant to see what the impacts would be on a set flow amount of 50,000 gallons per day from Unimetall. And since that time, there's been concerns raised by the DEP on the impacts to the treatment plant. So they asked that an inhibition study be done. And the request was also made to evaluate the toxicity of the effluent if it was mixed. The effluent from the treatment plant was mixed with Unimetall's effluent and see what impact that would have. So we based our evaluation on Unimetall flow as is. Um, I know concerns have been raised in the past as to it's still unclear to the WPCA what type of treatment will be made on this river or additional flow over the 30,000 gallons per day that's already currently coming through the plant. Um, but it appears that the toxicity sampling results were successful in that they showed that the treatment plant discharge when mixed with Unimetall's effluent does help to minimize the overall toxicity of the blended flow. Um, but then we still need to, that data seemed to back up the town's suggestion on limiting flow to 50,000 gallons per day. And then I'll turn it over to Fred to talk a little bit more about those results. Our thoughts on impacts on nitrogen and other loads to the plant. And then finally comments on the proposed inhibition study that still remains to be completed.
All right, thanks Lori for that, that kind of background and intro. When we, uh, when we, when we talked, first talked about this in September, doing this, I was kind of anticipating that the testing would be done and the Unimetall would put a report together. But, um, um, when we got the results, I had to do a deep dive into it to, to look at it. And, you know, redefine or remember from several months ago, what the objectives were, try to put them down in writing, be clear. So a lot of the text that you're seeing is just setting the stage for what we were, what we believe we were trying to accomplish, what the limits of the testing were. But, um, you know, the general gist of it is, is as Lori said, plus, you know, this is a snapshot into one day of flow. Hoping that it's representative and hoping that on that day, Unimetall was having its typical toxicity problem, which it, which we believe the evidence shows. And that Thomaston was having a typical, um, good toxicity day, which we believe the evidence shows. So those two things were good. That kind of suggests that perhaps this test study would give us some useful results. And when we did look at the results, we, it was clear to show that, uh, the, uh, when you blended, I, I prefer to say that we take, take, uh, Unimetall's flow and dilute it with the plant flow, which is much larger. We can see that the Unimetall's effluent, when it reaches a high enough concentration, is toxic, um, just like it is in the river. Um, and tox- and toxicity is defined by all the test parameters, which I kind of defined in the report. But at the end of the day, we concluded that as long as Unimetall's effluent is somewhere less than 25 to 9, 9% of, of, um, the town's flow, the town's existing flow, um, we should not see it. We should not see the town's effluent, um, exhibit toxicity. Now, I gave you a big range there because, you know, there's a lot of unknowns, a lot of uncertainty, a lot of this toxicity is statistically based. That's why you do it quarterly. Um, and if you fail, you do it some more. So, you know, the most conservative interpretation is if Unimetall's flow remained less than 9% um, of the, of the plant's existing flow, which is consistent with the 50,000 gallons per day, it, it appears that it would not exhibit toxicity in your effluent. That's probably as succinct as I could put it. So if there's any questions you have, I could try to answer them related to the toxicity. I wasn't sure if Unimetall would be here today to, to, um, comment on it.
Well, I, I saw a couple of them on the list, Fred, so they are.
Yep.
They are intended.
Okay.
Hi, this is Debbie. I apologize, my camera isn't working. Um, so yeah, it looks like, uh, the conclusions were, you know, 10% to 33% of the WPCF flow. So the low range there, 10% would be about 70,000 gallons per day of Unimetall. Uh, I'll call it the quote, "Unimetall's effluent" as you did in this memo. So, uh, we are, you know, I think that's something we can live with. Um, I also just wanted to, uh, address on page four. You had noted some what you thought were possible, um, errors in the reports. So we went back to, um, both labs. So NEB, uh, says there was not an error and that when the, um, they warmed up the samples, the pH decreased. So not a typo on their report. ACT looked at their report and thought it was a transcription error, and it was indeed. Um, so we have asked for a revised report. So I will send that along once I receive it. Would not expect that's going to change, uh, the results.
And I would, I would agree with that, but I felt it was important just to try to, you know, look at the QC and look at anything that jumped out. Thank you for, thank you for looking into that.
This is Commissioner Laduke. I have a clarification. If I understood correctly, the, um, Mr. Mueller or Muller, I'm not sure which one that is, said-
I'll, I'll take the same as Tom.
Said 50,000 would be the limit, and I just thought I heard 70,000 be the limit. So those are two, um, the limit for flow that we would accept. So I'm curious as to why they're different. And the second clarification is for Bert, do we keep a pretty steady, um, average plant flow? Or will that fluctuate enough that the number would have to be reduced below 50,000 at certain times?
Let me take a stab at that first and then, um, Bert and, um, and Debbie can jump in. So, um, the, the way the test was designed, uh, well, let's just put it this way, the way I looked at it is that 50,000 gallons per day is what the town requested or with the WPCA. It's what their decision was in the local limit study. The 9.4% number came from a very conservative analysis of, of the flow of, of, of the test results. And I just kind of said, I pointed out the 9.5 or 9.4% dilution number. And then I compared that in a table to, um, Unimetall's flow at 50,000 gallons per day because that's what the town, um, propose, you know, the town asked us to base the local limit study on. But I, we also compared it to what Unimetall's proposed flow because they had requested a higher flow of 80,000 gallons per day for this new flow. So the table two in the report kind of spells out the differences. And, um, you know, the, the Unimetall's proposed flow, 50,000 gallons per day is 7.6% of the flow of the plant's existing flow, which is point six, which we conservatively picked in the summertime on a daily average of point six MGD, which is the lowest day we, lowest seven day average we saw in the last two years. So we're trying to be conservative picking a low flow. That, that is representative of the, you know, real numbers that you have seen recently, which is when you're, you would be most concerned about the effect of dilution and you're going to have the least amount of dilution capacity for Unimetall's flow.
Thank you.
So, um, our flow varies. And I, I believe like Fred said, when they talked about the study, we picked, uh, the lowest flow that we've seen in a while, which is around the point six. Um, occasionally it's, a few years back before that was a little lower, but I don't see that being a, um, deciding factor in this. But we, we tried to, to figure those numbers on the, the point six as opposed to the high flows that we get. Now, I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, but that 50,000 does, that does not include the 30 we already get, correct?
That's correct.
The, that's correct. The 50,000 gallons per day from Unimetall does not include what you get already, already. That's correct.
Okay. So, so that 50,000 is an additional 50,000?
That's correct.
Correct. And we looked, we looked at the 80,000 gallons per day at Unimetall's request with, with the understanding that they would reduce it within, I think about 18 months to 50,000. Unfortunately, it appears that the test results now do, would not allow that without giving our treatment plant problems on low flow days. So I don't know that we could entertain approving that, but would have to look at it further, I guess.
All right. I think that's a fair statement. If we look at the results of this test in the most conservative manner, which means keep that dilution below 9.4%, then, then you, you know, the most proposed flow is 80,000, sorry?
That, that's about 70,000 for Unimetall flow.
What's about 70,000, Debbie?
Uh, the, um, the 9.4%.
Of point six MGD?
Yes.
Right. So that's why Debbie can't pick the higher number because all's I do is compare it to 50 and 80. And she's saying, well, let's take the 9.4% and scale it back from the plant minimum flow of point six one MGD. And she comes up with 70,000. So it's pretty close to the 80.
Okay, I thought Debbie said earlier, 10% of 700,000 was how she got 70,000, so.
Well, there's different ways of rounding, I think, or if, but I can, I can run the exact numbers.
Yeah, I, I, these are not exact in any way. I'm using-
I mean, 9.4% of 600,000 is 56,000. So I guess it's all how you look at the numbers.
So conclusion number two, note that this is equivalent to Unimetall's new effluent flow remaining less than 10.5%. So that's the most conservative.
Okay, so I gotta be careful here. So when we talk about 9.4%, I'm saying 9.4% of the plant's existing flow, which Bert and everybody here is most familiar with because they've been dealing with it for the last few years. And that's what we have the statistics on. After Unimetall comes in, then Unimetall would be a different proportion of the new flow, which is what I stated in that last sentence of that paragraph. And that was purely just to try to, um, put it in that perspective, to be clear.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to, to really talk about the existing 30. You're already seeing it. It's, it's already included in there.
No, that's not what I'm saying, Debbie.
Okay.
That last sentence that you read of that paragraph two is based on what proportion of Unimetall's new 50,000 gallon per day flow that have, town's not accepted yet, would be of the plant's future flow on a low flow day or a low flow week. That's all.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So it will be an increased percentage because the numerator is increasing at a faster rate than the denominator. Have I got that right of what you're saying? It'll be a greater percentage?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And that's the only time I, I look at the numbers that way because the way the test was designed, we're, we're blending, the town's existing flow with Unimetall's flow in a certain percentage. So all, all of the blend, all of the other percentages in this report are based on the first way we've been talking about it. Unimetall's flow compared to the town's existing flow. Unimetall's proposed flow compared to the town's existing flow, which encourages up to 30, includes up to 30,000 gallons per day of Unimetall's existing flow.
Hey Fred, could you, can you just clarify the, your definition of conservative versus, versus least conservative? Um, is that based on our flow? Because it seems to be, the same flow from Unimetall. I don't understand conservative versus, uh, non-conservative in, in this report.
All right. So one way of looking at the, um, one way of looking at the acute toxicity testing results is to look at the no observable effects level. And the other way of looking at it is to look at the LC 50 percentages and then you go into the regulations and the Connecticut regulations would say if you, you know, that, that something could be considered toxic at 33% of the LC 50. So that gives you a different set of numbers.
And so we're, we're saying the conservative point of view is from which set of numbers?
Uh, 33% of the LC 50.
Okay, thank you.
So right, that is based on the fish sample result. So the 9.4% was multiplying the LC 50 by the application factor of point three three. So that's explained kind of in the middle of page three of that report. Or the memo. If that helps.
So in layman's terms, I, I could, I could assume that we could take 9% of our total flow from Unimetall, which would be about 80,000 gallons, gallons per day. Or 70,000 gallons per day, according to Debbie. Is that correct? If, if it's 9% at the most conservative level?
At the most conservative level, 9.4% of, of 6, um, point six one million, uh, 610,000 gallons per day is what, Laura? You just calculated it, right?
54.
54, uh, uh, gallons per day, 54 thousand gallons per day.
Right.
Thank you.
Not additional?
No, that would be additional.
That would be, that would be additional?
Brand new gallons.
Yeah, those would be brand new gallons.
Okay. So that would be the upper limit?
No, conservative.
No, I mean, if we, if we are going conservative, we could accept an additional 54,000, not an additional 80,000.
At the, at the 600,000 gallons per day level at the treatment, at our treatment plant, yes.
Okay.
Was there verbiage in the, uh, in the report, Fred, I recall saying that, uh, Unimetall doesn't accept that? I, I thought I read page where, uh, a line in there that said it was unacceptable.
Um, yeah, we were just quoting some correspondence that occurred after, um, the, um, the local limit study was published. I'm, but since that correspondence, I don't know if any, there's been any other correspondence that may revise that, but that's the, the latest that we have.
I'm sorry, I don't have the report in front of me. So Bob, you're saying that Unimetall finds that unacceptable?
Um, maybe I'll let, I'll let Debbie respond to that.
Sorry, I'm still trying to figure out those numbers. I'm not coming up with 54,000, but we can-
57,340.
We can, we can hash that out. Um, yeah, so, uh, I'm not sure, Joe, exactly where you're looking. Um, I, I must have missed that in here, but I guess we're, we're, uh, ideally hoping for more than 50. Currently, the river flow is approximately 80,000 gallons a day. Um, so that's, you know, that would be ideal for Unimetall.
That's probably where it is. I mean, it's in conclusions, it's under conclusions in the report. Page, uh, I'm going from memory here.
Bottom of page five.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
So Debbie, I have a question, maybe you can answer for me. Um, I know with, with our end on municipal, that our DMR reports are due by the 15th each month. Is it the same day for the industrial wastewater?
Wow, no. We're at the end of the month.
You're at the end of the month? Okay. Well, that, that would explain the one question I had. Um, it seems since there's been a change of who's running the facility now at Unimetall, we now lack in getting the DMR reports emailed to us like they should be in a timely manner. Um, we receive one or two every couple of months as opposed to one every month. And the last email we got, we got November, or yeah, October and November's, but not the December one yet because he said it wasn't complete yet. So I've just, as, as a standpoint, we're, you know, you guys want to bring more flow to us, I, I think we need to be a little better on getting the reports to us and, and the stuff that, you know, is required of it.
I totally agree, uh, and I will pass that along. I'm not sure what the problem is there. I know I have the December spreadsheet that I can send to you now. Not sure why that hasn't gotten to you yet. I will follow back. Um, so-
Is Pat on the, is Patty attending the meeting?
Yeah, he's here.
Pat, are you here?
I'm here, Tom.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but are your DMRs due by the end of the month following the month in which the sampling took place?
Don't hold me verbatim, but I do believe that is correct, sir, yes.
Okay. Bert, that would explain it. The December DMR doesn't have to be done until the end of January.
Till January, right. But on the same token, we also got Septembers and Novembers this month instead of, you know?
That, that's another issue that has to be addressed, but.
Yeah, that's always part of what I was getting to. Yeah. Bert, Bert, you're correct. And we got scolded on the last meeting and I think that's why you got a couple together. Okay. And that's where hopefully Joe's on top of his game. Okay.
Are there any more questions or comments on the aquatic toxicity testing? My, my, my gut sense is overall, this test gave us comfort, a, a level of comfort that 50,000 gallons per day of flow from Unimetall, um, it, you know, is, is likely not to cause a problem. Higher flows are certainly more likely to cause a problem. And that no major red flags popped up saying this is a no, this is, you know, this deal will not work.
Well, Fred, Fred, I think one caveat in, in that needs to be, it depends on how they get to the 50,000 gallons per day. If they do it by strictly reducing the flow and increasing the level of contaminants, then we haven't gained anything. And we don't have any information on that. We don't have the information on the treatment system they intend to put in, and we don't have any data from it.
Right. That, that's correct, Tom. I, I apologize. I, I was going to get to that later, but yes, you're right. I, it, what I said would only work if they shut down some processes to lower the- What I said would only work if they shut down some processes to lower the flow. But if they change the treatment system, which they're planning on doing anyway, there's some risk there. We did try to correct for that based on collecting samples prior to the bio tower, which we know will be eliminated. But you're right, Tom, as you suggested, if they redo their treatment system, there's a chance that the characters that we tested, the toxicity characteristics that we tested for during this test will change. So it's important to be, attempt to be conservative again.
And I guess I just want to clarify that we did submit the, quote, "new system" changes with the permit application. So you have those drawings with the permit application. And essentially, that's the change to a Lamella clarifier and a sand filter, a high-rate sand filter. So still physchem treatment we're proposing.
That would be appropriate at 80,000 gallons per day. Assuming you keep the same process. But if you were to reduce the flow to 80,000 gallons from 80 to 50, as Tom alluded to at the beginning of this call, I know you did some pilot testing a few years ago that implied that there'd be some kind of water reuse system that would end up concentrating the metals and reducing the water discharge flow rate. Is that still in the works, as Tom alluded to?
No. I think the way that we would go would be eliminating some processes.
Okay, Debbie, we understand that in the past recent history, there's been some, I'm going to call them serious non-compliances, in metals being discharged from the existing treatment system? To the point where they exceeded the daily max, not just the average? How is this new system going to do any better on metals removal than the existing one does?
In my opinion, I would say there's two major improvements. One being the clarifier. So they currently have, I'll call them settling basins. So Lamella clarifier is much better at removing solids. I think a lot of the solids are being carried over, and that is resulting in a larger BOD and metals concentrations. The other is...
Do you have data that shows that the metals that are being carried out are in fact suspended and not dissolved?
Not yet. I propose that. And the other is a change in treatment chemistry.
Okay, but when will you have some data on that?
The new chemistry is being installed this week, so probably in the next couple of weeks. And I will also follow up on the dissolve versus total.
Can you just describe briefly the treatment, the new treatment chemistry?
So we're using, continuing to use the Ferris and... Oh, I'm drawing a blank. Patrick, help me out here. We are continuing to use the two. Oh, thank you.
Ferris in line.
Thank you. And we are adding a new coagulant from Hubbard Hall called AP99.
Does it have some sulfide chains on it that's going to grab the metals?
One person at a time? Fred?
Yep.
What was your question?
Sorry, does that coagulant from Hubbard Hall have an active sulfide chain when I'm starting to see marketed around?
Debbie?
I am double-checking. I believe that was also included in the application. So I can get you the SDS for that.
All right.
Do you have a question?
Lori, do we have a copy of that application? I vaguely recall seeing something come in a while ago and looking at it, but I haven't looked at it in months.
We have it. I'm trying to actually email it to you, but it's so big that it's blowing up my computer right now.
Just send me the link. That's fine.
Okay.
Let it blow up my computer. I'll have to look at that later. All right.
Tom, does you have a question about the chemistry? Yeah, are you using Ferris chloride or Ferris sulfate?
Ferris sulfate.
Current.
Okay. Now, the lime, is that virgin lime or a byproduct?
I believe it's virgin.
Yeah, virgin.
Okay. Because the lime slurry from a byproduct has been known to contain cyanide.
Yeah, not this one.
Okay, shall we move on to the inhibition study?
Sure. So we look at the inhibition study and... Sorry?
Do you have anything else on this that we need to bring up?
For the aquatic toxicity testing? No, I think we got that covered.
Okay.
As far as the inhibition...
Your nitrate discussion was before the inhibition. I don't know if you want to talk about that briefly?
Well, I think it's up to Tom. He asked for the inhibition first.
No, go ahead. Go ahead with the nitrate. That's fine.
Okay. Well, if we're going to go through the report, we should mention the aquatic toxicity testing analysis. You know, we looked at the numbers on the metals and whatnot that was done in the lab analytical. Didn't find anything of concern or worth getting into. And then for the influent nitrate data, what we did was, we looked at a couple of years' worth of data for the influent nitrate. Just for everybody's understanding, nitrate typically coming into a wastewater treatment plant or in a collection system only comes from industrial sources. It's not excreted. It's not typical domestic waste. And Unimetal creates a lot of it. Nitrate, when it gets into the wastewater treatment plant, is an oxygen source. And if it gets mixed into your primary clarifiers, and there's enough biological activity into them, the bugs in your first-stage clarifiers can use that nitrate as an oxygen source, and they'll create nitrogen gas from that, which can cause floating sludge. So, and you know, DEP has indicated and reminded us all that years ago, when you were taking high-nitrate waste from the neighbors, you know, they had problems with rising sludge as well. Although I've never heard any nitrate levels quoted, so that you could compare them to what Unimetal's doing. But that's the main concern for nitrate. So we looked at the data for the last two years that the plant routinely grabs, I'm sorry, collects in the influence samplers when they do monthly sampling. And we know, and we plotted it on some graphs. And then during this fall or late summer, Bert and his team collected some grab samples of nitrate to see what was happening. And the difference between a grab sample is you get it, and you can analyze it quickly or filter it. Actually, no, they didn't filter it, but you can analyze it quickly and preserve it. And a composite sample sits there for a day, and there's always the opportunity you can get some denitrification in that. So we wanted to get some grab samples. And when we looked at the results, it was kind of suggesting that when your plant flows are low, you've got very little nitrate coming into the plant. And that, we think, is due to the fact that you're losing nitrate in your collection system because the biology that grows on your pipes in the collection system may help, you know, may help reduce the nitrate in the pipe by consuming BOD, you know, waste coming to you. That only occurs in anoxic environments, which means no dissolved oxygen, which is why in the summer, when flows are dry, sewers tend to smell more because you get these conditions that generate odors. That's consistent with low oxygen levels as well, low or no oxygen. So it was no surprise for me to see that when the plant flows were low, you've had very low levels of nitrate coming into the plant. And when plant levels flows were higher, consisting of what we call inflow and infiltration, which typically is higher in oxygen and low in waste, that you got higher levels of nitrate coming into the plant. What we concluded from all that is, yep, nitrate's making it to your plant. We can't count on it being removed in the sewer at all times. And that, at least during the period of record, we have, you know, levels of 25 pounds a day came into the plant without the operators seeing major problems with the plant. I know this summer flows were low overall, and I think, I can't say, I can't say we didn't see any... During that time, I don't think anybody could point to the conditions of the sludge in the tank and say, yeah, that's definitely due to Unimetal. So I guess there's two conclusions out of all this. One is, in the local limit study, we recommended a nitrate limit, a limit of around 75 pounds a day for nitrate plus TKN, actually, 73 pounds a day, plus nitrate. All the nitrogen coming into the plant, TKN nitrogen plus nitrate nitrogen plus nitrite nitrogen. Be said, it's 72.8 pounds per day. And the data we looked at suggests that up to 25 pounds a day of nitrate only, which is the only thing that could denitrify, is, you know, did not negatively, did not appear to negatively impact the plant. So again, that made me feel comfortable too that that the limits that we put in for in the local standard, we were in the right ballpark. Quite frankly, it's a little bit of guesswork on how much nitrate is going to give you a problem at the plant. You can't really figure it out until it happens. So the other conclusion is that if the plant operators start to see bubbling sludge in the primaries, they should start sampling nitrate coming into the plant and try to get a handle on what that is right then and there. And then that can give this idea of it's much higher than 25 pounds a day, and maybe that'll tell us what the threshold is. But to my knowledge, in the last, how many years that Unimetal's existing flow has been coming to the plant, you know, there hasn't been a concern there.
Now, Fred, the question I have is, Bert, you may be answering this, or Tom, I mean, I mean, Rich, what is the levels that are coming in now of nitrate that, you know, Unimetal's sending? I mean, you can see now, there's no difference in the other flow that's coming. There's not a lot of nitrates coming from the additional flow. What are you guys seeing now, Bert?
Fred, do you have the numbers in front of you? I have some of them here, but I don't think I have all of them.
So, so the numbers that I put in the report are all a milligrams per liter, and then we multiply that concentration by the flow for that day, and we come up with pounds per day. And then I assumed that it is all from Unimetal, as though the major industrial source in town.
Because I have the sheet Eric gave me, and I have the monthly breakdowns. But it just gives me an average per day. It doesn't give me, you know, for the month of January that, say, for instance, the month of January 2020, our average was 26 pounds, or 26.6 pounds of nitrogen.
Coming into the plant, Bert?
Yes, he doesn't, it's not broke down. I believe they sent Fred and Lori the breakdowns of the actual daily samples and stuff that he was doing.
So, what did I say?
So I think table four, Fred, of the memo summarizes the data. And that's, I think, how you got the 25 pounds. There was one in 2019 that was 28 pounds, but other than that...
Right, but I think the, was the question being asked related to how many pounds are coming into the plant? Or was it related to how many pounds are leaving Unimetal?
Oh, I assumed it was coming to the plant.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean...
George, can you clarify that?
Can I clarify that? I'm not sure what the question was.
Okay, so let me just kind of...
Sorry, I thought you asked the question.
I'm asking Fred, is, what was, what is coming to the plant on a regular basis than assuming that it's all coming from Unimetal?
Right. I got a chart on table four, and it basically shows that a lot of the data points are between 10 and 28 pounds a day.
All right. I asked the question, is Bert or Tom, Rich now, what is coming into the plant per day? Do we know? Bert?
Like I said, the chart I do have with me, he gives me average. So Eric breaks them down in months when he gives it to me, so it gives me a total. Like, the month of January, the total pounds was 133. The average daily was 26.6, and our average flow was 1.113 million. All that was for January 2020. So he gives me the whole month breakdown like that. I'd have to go back and look at Eric's records for each weekly test that he did to get you that number, though.
So are we assuming the majority of that is from Unimetal?
I would say yes.
Okay. Is that a bad thing, or a good thing, or neutral in general for denitrification?
We haven't noticed any severe problems from it yet.
Okay.
So, so one way to look at nitrate is this. A little bit of nitrate is good. It's actually free oxygen that you don't have to pay the electric company to pump oxygen into your ration tanks. But too much is bad because it can cause your, it can cause your process to fail by having rising sludge in the primary clarifiers because you've got denitrification. Too much at the wrong time of day is a problem. If you get this in the middle of the night at 3:00 in the morning, when everybody's sleeping, and most of the flow that you get is eye-to-eye, that nitrate is going to pass through your plant because you don't have enough BOD to help denitrify it, convert it to gas. And you're going to, it's going to go out in your outfall, and you'll increase your nitrogen loading to the... And you're gonna, it's gonna go out in your outfall and you'll increase your nitrogen loading to Long Island Sound. And you'll pay more for nitrogen credits.
Do we know what those, those levels are when you say, you know, a little is good, too much? Do we know what kind of numbers we're looking at at that time, Fred?
Like I said, I think right now the evidence is that if, if you stay under 25 pounds a day of nitrate, it looks like you're in good shape. From, from Unimetal. And that's what you're getting now.
Okay.
Now. The reason you're getting Unimetal's flow now is because the flows that had the most amount of nitrate were going to the Connecticut River. I'm sorry, to the Nagetuck River. And DEP wanted them out of the, that out of the river. So they're sending it to you so you can remove the nitrate. The existing flows still add more pounds of nitrate, not as, and then for a while since I looked at what those, the, the nitrate levels.
Do you have those numbers? What are the, what would the additional flow add to the nitrates? Do you know?
I don't.
No, that.
I think Lori, do you have that for the river flow when we did that last, the first study? Lori, it's really.
So George, there's a lot of nitric usage. So that really attributes to the nitrate.
So how much additional flow are we talking? I mean, how many, how much additional above the 25?
Oh, I was just gonna say more than 25 pounds.
Okay, an additional 25 or just more than 25 that they're getting now?
Let's see. Average concentration is about 26. So let's see, I have a maximum of 50 pounds.
So it seemed that that would present a problem, right? Fred?
Yeah, at, at that level, if they've got, if you've got 20, up to 25 pounds now. And they add another 50, yeah, that.
No, another 25 to make it 50.
To another 25 to make it 50. And then we had recommended, you know, a limit of 72 to include all the nitrate plus whatever nitrite. Plus whatever TKN comes in, all, they're all nitrogens.
Yeah. Total flow from all sources?
From Unimetal.
So that's just the river discharge, George?
I understand.
Okay.
Just trying to get from Fred when he talks about coming flow into the town. What was this whole TKN that you're looking at? 70, would you say 72, Fred?
Yeah, that's what we put in the total nitrogen coming in from Unimetal. Which would include the existing flow of 72.3. Whatever I said on page. I lost my page here. Yeah, page eight of the, bottom of page eight of the, of the report. And the basis for that 72.8 was described in the local limit study. So we have to go back there and look at that and I I know part of that was the idea to limit the industrial loads to a certain percentage of the plant design flow. But there's maybe more involved in that. But that was consistent with DEP's DEP's insistence. Or cautions.
And the facility plan, I thought.
And, and right, based on the, they, they said you did the facility plan. It was based on these assumptions. So if we're going to meet those assumptions, then the way to interpret that is this plant, this Thomason plant was designed to remove so many pounds of nitrogen. So all that nitrogen comes from TKN nitrate and nitrite. So if we limited that to 10%, then we come up with 72.8 pounds or whatever the percentage was.
So right now we're at Deb 25? Brad, 25?
Because the section of this part of the report was looking at the nitrate data. I only came up with the, I only looked and nitrate is unique in its ability to cause floating in the primary clarifiers. I always was focusing on nitrite, nitrite, nitrate. But I did not go as far as adding up the existing nitrate and nitrite and TKN for the existing flows and the future flows. I didn't go that far in my analysis. But yeah, it's going to be a lot more and they're probably over the 72.8 pounds a day.
So that really leaves us with the fact that, you know, we've got to, we've got to eliminate some processes that get us below that level. Is that what I'm reading?
Hey George, one of the ways that you were going to do that though is with that European zinc bath with no ammonia. As long as it continues to work, that's going to take a chunk out when it comes to the nitrogen associated with ammonia, correct Fred and Deb?
Yeah, but, well, we have enough, yeah, we have enough data. We have enough data before May for them to feel comfortable with that is the question. Is that, is that in play yet, Pat? Or are they just kind of?
It's on 44, they converted 44 two weeks ago.
Okay, so there's not enough data yet to really distinguish that that's having an effect on, on total nitrates, right?
Well, I'm not worried about total nitrates, worried about the process first. And it seems to be working pretty well. Hey, if there's no, if there's no ammonia, there's, there's, there's no nitrates.
Well, I mean, town needs to be, feel comfortable that they see that there, right? Right, Fred?
I, can you repeat? I, I was trying to make some notes based on what I was hearing, but you're going to a low ammonia process.
A no ammonia.
No ammonia, Fred.
No.
No ammonia, no boron.
So both our, both our zinc baths are ammonia based, Fred. And what we're doing is our, our supplier has a bath that's been proven in Europe to be boron free. So we've converted one of our lines to this bath in the last two weeks, which would help with the total numbers. And that's what we're talking about here.
Right, so it'll reduce ammonia. Now, my, my conceptual model of what's happening is that any ammonia that's coming out is not going to be removed in your treatment process. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and so, yeah, if you, you know, I, I can only guess, you know, how much load that, that, that process line is for ammonia. But that would certainly, if you're doing that, that would certainly reduce your, your TKN, which is ammonia plus organic nitrogen.
Well, if our current load is, what would you say is about 25, 26?
Your current load for the existing outfall going to the plant. On page, on table four of the report, I compared what's coming into the town, the town, which varies from non-detect or zero pounds or actually non-detect is like, you know, between a half and then non-detects, if you convert it to pounds a day by assuming that it was coming in at half the detection limit. You know, that's like, you know, anywhere between point six and point eight pounds a day of of nitrate coming in. But they were going up as high as 10 to 25, 28 pounds a day of nitrogen coming into the plant. When we looked at the data that we had for your existing flow coming to the plant, in other words, leaving your facility and we averaged out over a long period of time. It averaged around 10 pounds a day. A max a month that we saw was 28 pounds a day. And the peak load we ever saw from you was about 42 pounds a day.
That's on the riverside. I mean, that's on the, the city side, right, Pat?
That's on the city.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so. If we talk about the riverside, I mean, if we convert these baths over, Pat, I mean, that's going to go down. I mean, not going to go down. I mean, they're gonna, they're not going to see too much of an increase, right?
It's going to eliminate it. You've got to figure those baths now are at a bounce bring out of ammonium chloride.
Well, I mean, what Deb was saying, it's, you know, right now, if we don't change anything, it says additional 25 pounds, right, Deb?
So the ammonia alone is an additional 25 pounds.
So if we're eliminating that with the, the ammonia free non-boron bath, then Pat, you can say that that would be eliminated. You feel comfortable saying that, Pat?
Yeah, then you got other sources or other sources end up being the nitric acid and some nitrate rust preventatives. So you got to go ahead and, you know, capture those.
But that's nothing that they're not getting now.
They're getting that now on the riverside.
Correct. I'm talking about flow from the river. It's just a couple of zinc baths, right?
We believe that's the worst of it. The ammonia is going to be the worst of it.
Got it.
But to be clear, you're going to a no ammonia, no boron process on your zinc bath for one line. You've done that already. There's more lines you're going to do?
One more line, Fred. It's our, our major line. We're, we're, we're trying it out on the hand line, which is a smaller line, just to prove it out. Okay, doing a small conversion. So we're not dumping and replacing, we're doing a conversion over.
Yep.
And, and, and that has been taking place over the last two weeks.
Very good. And that line is going, the discharge in that line is going to the river?
Yes.
And so if this works, the major line, which is probably 20% of our flow. We're gonna, we would convert that over as well.
Okay.
For 20% of our flow to the river. Right, Pat?
Correct.
Okay. Right, so for, so Fred, if, if, if this works and it's worked in Europe, but you know, we're proving it here in the States, you would get no additional flow, no additional pounds of the nitrates from Unimetal that when, what you're getting now is what we're expecting. Correct, Pat, Deb?
I'm saying yes, but there's, I mean, there is some residual nitrate, nitric acids here or there.
I get it.
So it's not, it's not, it's not everything, but it's going to be probably 80, 90% of what we got.
Majority of it.
So I don't know the exact chemistry when you say it's a, a no ammonia, no boron process. But I, I'm assuming that if, if, if what's in there is ammonia nitrogen and you're eliminating the ammonia nitrogen, it would not impact the nitrates in your river outfall because in my mind, if there, an ammonia bath doesn't have nitrate in it, nitrate in it. If it's an ammonia nitrate kind of mix, then, then yes, I would, I could understand that. So if you're going to a no ammonia, no nitrate process, then that's the case. It's very hard to convert ammonia to nitrate. Actually, ammonia is converted biologically from nitrate, like from ammonia to nitrite, then to nitrate.
Right.
That's a biological process that the Thomason WPCF has, but generally you don't see that in an industrial process or in the collection system occurring. So if the change in the chemistry of those two processes, zinc bath lines to a no ammonia, I, I don't think that's going to impact the nitrate coming to Thomason or going to the river.
It's going to affect the total TKN, right?
It will affect the TKN, but not the nitrate.
Right.
So just based on the, I just had the December data open, if we remove all of the ammonia, we're left with about 32 pounds of total nitrogen.
That's for just your river line?
Yes.
Okay.
So. All right. So that's encouraging. So if you got rid of all the ammonia from the river line.
Right.
Bring it down to 32 pounds of nitrogen.
Well, let's not say, Fred, we can get it down because we do use ni- nitric for rinse.
That's included, that's included in that 32 pounds, George.
Right.
I know, but we're not going to eliminate that, right?
Right. That's just assuming the ammonia is, is eliminated.
Got it. But how much of 32 is ammonia based, do you think?
None, that's without the.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, Fred, you're, you're accurate. If we eliminate the 32.
Right.
That's encouraging, right?
Yep. And then, and then you know, for the existing we'd have to add in the existing discharge ammonia levels, which I did not include in this graph because I had my blinders on. I was just only looking at nitrate. But the existing river discharge, the existing discharge to the town, I think does have some ammonia in it. But I, I could be wrong. It's been a while since I looked at it.
Yeah, ver- very little, Fred.
Can't be much, right?
Yeah. I, we'd have to go back and look at the data we have or maybe Lori will.
Yeah, I don't know of any processes over there that are ammonia related.
Can't be much, Fred.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I don't have ammonia. I have TKN and the average TKN concentration is seven milligrams per liter. So, yeah, not much.
So seven times seven times eight point three four times this as well, it's to say is 0.0 three zero. Yeah, it's a two pounds a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be that would, that would seem to comply with that would seem to, that would seem to work. Now, Debbie, you got the numbers for nitrite handy too? On the, on, on the, in the town discharge?
I have an average of 20 milligrams per liter nitrite.
And that's one seasonally, that's what seasonally varies.
Yes.
20 times eight point three four times 0.03. Helps if I divide, multiply, not divide 20.
Roughly five pounds.
Yeah, it's going to be about five pounds, Fred.
All right, thanks. My computer's trying to reboot and update security, slowing me down. Yeah. Yeah. So we're, you're in the ballpark. I know, I know it varies. Varies quite a bit and bounces around a bit, but it's an issue of business.
Exactly.
I can't help but to wonder though if you know, there's some way of getting some bugs to grow on some media at your place and, and see if you can make some kind of anoxic thing to knock down the nitrate and consume some of your BOD.
Does anybody have any information on what this process changed for 20% of your discharge will do to your toxicity? Reduce it, I guess, huh, Pat?
It's the reason they're using it in Europe was to eliminate the BOD as well as the ammonia. At the BOD, the boron.
Yeah, are those two items big contributors to your toxicity?
Ammonia could be at the right pH.
It was on occasion, but usually our pH is correct.
So it's getting rid of ammonia, it's getting rid of boron. I guess, I think Tom's asking, is it adding anything that might impact on toxicity?
At the, I I can't tell you exactly i- if that's the case or not, but it has a similar organic load that the baths have right now when it comes to uh the the components that make the bath do what it's supposed to do. Um, you know, we could never, if we could figure out what the the toxic entity was that would get us to 92% survivability of our, of our species, you know, I wouldn't be having this conversation, but you can never put a finger on exactly what items had the toxic effects.
Right.
That, I'm not asking if it would eliminate the toxicity because I think that would be a little bit too much to ask. But we just went through a toxicity evaluation and comes up with, come up with some data that indicates that 9.4% of the treatment plants flow would be acceptable and meet our, continue to meet our toxicity limits. How do we know that that doesn't get knocked down to 8% by the process change in 20% of your discharge?
Yeah, Tom, I really can't answer that question. You're you're right with what you're saying, but, you know, my sense is that it would, whatever we're doing with that process, my sense is, but I can't give you an exact, would be, it's gonna be less toxic.
Okay.
Yeah, they are um trying to find the SDS here, but it it's um it looked good on paper. Let's just say that.
Okay.
Okay, can we move on to the inhibition quickly? Because I do have to, I do have to leave this meeting in about a half hour, a little bit more.
All right. So for the inhibition study, I I tried to describe what what I thought the goals were and and um what, what, what we think we could accomplish based on the way the test was designed. Um, originally, we started talking about the uncertainty in boron toxicity. Now it suggests that maybe boron's no longer be, gonna be an issue. But um i- in in the September meeting, we decided, um, or we discussed doing a broad scale um inhibition study, just to see if there is anything that's happening um with, with the effluent that could be um to inhibit the bugs in in the treatment plant. Inhibition is sort of like a toxicity test for specific. Instead of fish in the stream, it's, it's the bugs in the um in the, in the sequencing batch reactor at the plant, and we want to make sure they continue to remove BOD. And also, um, more importantly, which tends to be more sensitive, the bugs that uh convert ammonia to nitrite and then nitrate. Um, so if we get a toxic effect on those bugs, it's gonna inhibit their ability to um to consume the waste in your tanks. And um this test is designed to do that by measuring the oxygen uptake rate. So I looked over the test. Um, there were some procedures in there that I didn't understand what they were trying to do and what what kind of dilution um they were making. So I put in some detailed com- comments in here so that uh um, test designers can can make some adjustments. My goal was to try to, again, come up with a, a blend of Unimetal's effluent and your sequencing batch reactor solids. There's a sample of solids from your tanks have to be sent to, sent along with samples of effluent from the plant and effluent from, or effluent from Unimetal. To be blended at the lab to try to recreate a, a toxic condition to the the bugs at the treatment plant. So we can measure inhibition. So I look, I looked at two scenarios. The bugs in your plant be, can become accustomed to metals or other toxic things if, if given enough time. But you kind of have a unique situation in the sequencing batch reactor and Unimetal's flow stopping on the weekends. So if you do a test on a Monday, um, the bugs in there will not have seen um, Unimetal's effluent for several days, so the concentrations in the SPRs will drop. And later on in the week, they'll come back up again. So I suggested doing the testing at the end of the week um, when whatever toxic, toxicity from that Unimetal's effluent builds up in the SPR is at its highest level. And I think the rest of, the rest of this is just um um, talking through with uh Unimetal and Debbie, who designed the test, or, you know, Arquitas, who designed the test, uh, if they agree with the comments or feel other discussion is necessary.
Uh, thanks, Fred. So I think on page nine, you requested a data summary, which of course um we can provide. Your comment on the 50% dilution, um, I guess when uh, due to time, I think you and I are just gonna have to have a separate sidebar on this. Uh, but it seems that you think there should be more than 50% dilution. Am I reading that right?
Um, well, when I wrote this, I revised it a couple of times, but eventually I did the spreadsheet in the table number five where I just um ran through and said, if I was designing this test and trying to make uh, the blend of Unimetal's effluent and the town's um, Unimetal and the town's existing effluent, try to ma- ma- match what's gonna happen in the field. I kind of came up with my conclusion, some summarized them all in there. So all the details are really in table five. Have you had a chance to look at that in any detail?
Uh.
Well, you want me to send you the spreadsheet so you can pick it apart?
Oh, well, now that would be awesome. I would, I would love that. It is a little difficult to see. Uh.
You like my small font?
I think, I know, I have it. Uh, yeah, I mean, my eyes are pretty good, but it's um, it's still a little small here.
All right.
Um, but I guess really the um, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm making that assumption based on the uh 2.26 liters. And we would, yeah, I I need to spend some more time with this, and then I'm gonna give you a call and go over it, but.
All right, so.
I think I, we just wanna be on the same page.
Do that with you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That, that being said, is there any, any big picture issues that we should talk, discuss with the town on it, or? I mean, it, I I I think that, big picture, I think the test is gonna accomplish what I kind of stated it. Well, you know, every test to do is a subject to limitations, but we wanna, we're looking for steps forward to give everybody comfort that we're going in the right direction.
Yep. I I totally agree.
And um, we should work out the details.
Yeah, I think it really has to do with the um, the volumes is what we need to agree on.
I I would agree with that. And Bert, you comfortable with doing a collections of uh samples um at the end of the week like we did for the toxicity testing?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. And ideally, you do it midnight on Saturday, Friday night to midnight on Saturday night. Are you comfortable with doing that?
If we have.
You can, you can say no, right?
I I'm gonna say my lab guy is probably not gonna be in favor of it, but whatever we have to do, we we have to do.
I think it's, I think when you look at the graph that I gave, it's close enough that we don't have to do that.
Okay. Now, Deb, did you, um, did you get the um, the numbers for the phosphorus dosing? I I do have it, and I apologize, last week I was out, so I was trying to work from home and
Okay.
Help get things to you, but.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I, we just wanted to make sure we had, we understood the how the phosphorus is dosed.
We actually, or the pack, I should say. Did find, yeah, we did find the pack dosage rate sheet that we were given by Holland, so I just wanted to make sure that was forwarded on to you, too, so you could have that.
Debbie, I saw that correspondence, was wondering what you were planning on doing with it. Was this for the inhibition study, or was this for this other study that you had talked about doing?
The other study.
The other study, so.
Not this one.
Not this one. Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay.
So, so I I think, I think the, the um key um key point for the WPCA, uh, listening in is that, you know, we're gonna try to work out the details, but it looks like a the study is appropriate to move, we we can get this to the point where we can move forward. And hopefully it'll give us similar results to the um to the toxicities test, but focused on not fish in the stream, but bugs in the tank.
Good.
All right. And is there anything else to be said about that other study that you're designing? Debbie?
Um, I guess I I am more worried about timing on that. Um, but we're, we're still developing the protocol.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about the timing in the inhibition study. I mean, it's not gonna happen this week, next week. Um, we're gonna get, come, come to some kind of agreement here, but uh I'm assuming it's gonna happen when Unimetal is well into um, operating this new process on the zinc line for the hand line, but it will happen before um, you go full scale on that, right? It's, I'm assuming this full scale, if it works thing is months, months out.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
If not years. Okay.
Months.
Years.
Is it, Tom, do you have any concerns about, uh, do you have any strong feelings one way or the other, whether we should wait, or?
No. No, I think we should just keep, keep pl- plugging along, you know?
I agree. All right.
Let's, let's get the inhibition study ironed out and then pull from there.
All right. Well, that'll, that'll conclude my, our discussion then. Um, and, and um we'll, we'll send Debbie the, the spreadsheet, and then we'll correspond back and forth, and then um, Debbie, when you get the, the revised study done, send it back to Tom and we can look at it, we can
Okay.
A comments then. All right.
Great.
Tom, Joe, I'm assuming we should also proceed with the nitrogen mass balance, mass loading calculations?
You're talking about the discussion we had earlier?
Correct. Figure out all the nitrogen, so what the actual loading is would be.
Now that can be done.
Somewhere along the line, we should equate that to gallons per day, too, correct?
No, that's a, a loading, a, a pounds per day.
Right. No, I'm with you. I I'm just trying to.
So I I'm picturing, it shouldn't be too much effort to just take what I wrote on page eight, the bottom, and just compare uh, maybe make a little table that compares what we've seen in the past to um, what um would happen if the, that those two, if all the ammonia was eliminated based on those two zinc bath lines changing.
Fred, I'm gonna offer that, that we can do that with our actual data. Okay.
Even better than I'll review it.
Yeah, I'll take the.
You got, you got the data analysis anyway.
The DMR. Yeah, I'll take the DMR data.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay.
All right. And you can share me where your, where your spreadsheet. I'll share mine. Okay.
It's an engineer's dream.
All right. I'll give you back your agenda, Tom.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Hey, that was a lot of work. Thank you, Fred.
Take care.
Thanks.
You have a good night.
All right, good night.
Okay, Bert, considering the compressed timetable that I put forward, uh, do you have anything earth shaking on treatment plant pump stations or collection system?
Uh, nope. We're all, everything's fairly decent. Um, everything's been running like it should. So we're, we're in pretty good shape there.
Okay, could we, could we table a more detailed review till the next meeting then?
Absolutely.
Okay, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, the only correspondence we had was the stuff from tie and bond and and um, the Unimetal studies, and the only other one we would have had was the, the guy on Homiston Circle um, with the, the want to log and and do the, the land clearing up there, but like I said, that's going through, he's gotta go through planning and zoning and everything first, so. It's not, not an important issue right now.
Okay, do you wanna briefly hit capital improvements?
So capital improvements, um, Sal Santa Maria put together some budgetary numbers for the SCADA upgrade. Um, they, his numbers come out to roughly a half million dollars to upgrade the SCADA system, so I'm gonna put that through for capital improvement, and I've also put the quote for the new garage in capital improvement and see if we can get anywhere with that.
Okay.
And that's about it for capital improvement. Um, there's nothing new on the FOG program. I've, I've had a little correspondence with Chubbs. I think they're one of the only restaurants left. Um, I gotta forward her the paperwork in the morning and she'll review it and get it back to us. Uh, list of equipment needed. We finally got some prices on the primary effluent pumps. Um, we did have that pump rebuilt and repaired. It seems to be working good right now. It's a hundred and eight thousand dollars just for a brand new vertical turbine pump. And then CPE gave us some options with a, replacing it with a submersible pump instead of the vertical turbine. And by the time we're done, you're, you're talking a pump uh VFD controls and stuff like that. We're, you know, it's 46,000 for the pump and another 30 for the controls. So we're about the same area money-wise, but less time to get the stuff and um I'm gonna say newer technology on it. So something we can keep in mind on what we wanna do there down the road.
Okay.
And that's uh
Difference in reliability and serviceability with those pumps?
Um, serviceability is gonna be about the same because either way, we'll need a crane to get the pump out. Um, reliability probably close to the same, um, serviced on the road. After you get the pump out, the submersible pump is easier to do repairs on. Um, it is a little more of an upgrade as opposed to just unboltin' the old one and bolting the new one in. So if if we get to that point, we'll, he'll send his guy out that does the installs and give us a much more uh, precise price on what it would cost to put it in.
Thanks, Bert.
Well, Bob. Um, and the only other thing on list of equipment and in capital is the new truck should be in next week at some point. Um, there was nothing new on Black Rock State Park. We're still waiting to hear back from the state on their agreement letter. And as of now, the budget looks pretty good. Uh, there are a couple of line items where we took some of the big expenses out that, you know, are a little used up, but we'll keep an eye on those. You know, are a little used up, but we'll keep an eye on those. And as of this day for collections, she's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars ahead of where we were last year at this point. So collections is looking good too. And that's it for me.
Okay, Stacy, do you have the budget sheets you could put up?
Were those the things that I was emailed today, or were these, the something else?
No, the um, expenditure sheet, revenue and expenditure. I don't know if she got them to you last week.
Hang on one moment. Yes, I have it, just give me a second.
Okay.
Okay, why? Okay.
The word, the um, contracted repair and maintenance for the sewer plant. Um, that's where a lot of the money came from for the S P R repairs and stuff like that, so that one's. You know, we've used about seventy percent of that budget right now, so. We're just gonna have to keep an eye on what we're doing around the plant and what it's, you know, kinda costing us, but. The rest of them are in pretty decent shape.
Okay, Stacy, that's a PDF file?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody want that file emailed to them so they can take a better look at it?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. I was able to get close enough and squint enough.
Does that help a little? Maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You're lucky they scanned them in, cuz I have a bad habit of putting them in the scanner upside down.
I accidentally turned my video off, so you can see now how close I made it to get.
Okay, can we go on to new business?
Yes.
I'm moved.
I received word from the town hall that the March meeting and the November meeting. We do not have the Lena Morton gallery available. I'm not really concerned about. Not as concerned about the November meeting. Uh. But I think our conference room is too small to be hosting a, a meeting down there in March.
Tom, how about going up to the meeting room one upstairs?
I was told that there are no available meeting rooms for us. And I don't know why, I don't know why one wasn't reserved when we approved the meeting dates back in November.
We get somebody.
Are you available for a Zoom meeting on March sixteenth?
Um, that's your normal regular night?
Yes.
Only assuming there's not a zoning board of appeals meeting, which is up in the air. If there's not a meeting, then yes, I could be available. I'm waiting to hear back if somebody's going to appeal something. If they appeal something, I have a meal, meeting. If they do not appeal, then. I would be available.
Well, this is in March, so you don't know of any appeals yet for that part, do we?
March, yeah, I'm already mentally into February. Okay, yeah.
I was gonna ask about February next, but, cuz I'd like to.
Well, that would be February. As of March right now, again, I'm not aware of anything in the hopper, but. I mean, if you wanna be absolutely safe, I know it's an inconvenience for you guys, um, but this third Tuesday of the month, I know I can. Set aside for you guys.
I, I lost part of that, I, it kind of faded away on my end.
Say, I know it's an inconvenience cuz it's not your normal meeting night, but if you wanted to be absolutely safe, I am, I know like this, this third um. This third Tuesday of the month, I can definitely be available for you guys.
That's February.
Yes, or March or whatever you wish.
That is our normal uh, meeting time, the third Tuesday.
The third Tuesday, yeah. The fourth Tuesday, they.
Is it the fourth? I apologize. Wow. Yeah, no, the fourth Tuesday, yeah, it's, it's been a little confusing, but yeah, no, um, yeah, no, the fourth Tuesday is a non-issue, I could be available. Third Tuesday is, if there's going to be a Z B A meeting, it is on Tues- it's on Thursday, third Tuesdays. Unfortunately.
I have no life, so I'm willing to change the night we meet, cuz I don't go anywhere in this crazy world we live in these days.
Well, I would like to leave it on the. Third Tuesday and then we'll change it to a special meeting if we have to.
That's fine too.
Okay. So we'll plan on a remote meeting in February for the third Tuesday unless someone else changes on the schedule.
Fair enough.
And hopefully too, also in March, so we can have the meeting in our own homes. Everybody okay with that?
Fine with me. Sounds good.
Okay, now we need a motion to go into executive session. Uh, inviting Bert and Stacy. To stay, uh. I don't know, is Jim still on the line?
Yep.
Okay, inviting Jim to stay also.
Joe moved.
Second.
Joe Finer.
Okay, let's just. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sounds like everybody, okay. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries at eight thirty-eight.
Okay, hang on one moment.
Yeah, Stacy, I still, I still see names, right?